I, Cody Perry, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue to be a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office and school board member of the McCoury County Board of Education according to law. And I do solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus fending. So help you God.
We're going to have roll call. The rationale of the McCoury County School District is to, McCoury County School District will provide a safe, supportive environment to meet the individual needs of all students and ensure their college and career ready. Have a roll call. Johnny?
Here.
Stacy?
Yeah.
Cody?
Here.
Lori?
Here.
And the chair. All right. I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda and the addendum. The addendum is at the end there. It's a recognition of students from McCoury County High School, art displays and choir performance in state competition performance.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to visit C, D, E, H, I, J, and K at the next meeting. I don't feel that I understand them enough to make the decision on those with the money that's tied behind it so.
Talking about the land acquisition, the one that...
It'll be C, D, E, H, I, J, K.
C, D...
D.
E, H?
I, J, K.
I, J, K. Okay, so you're making that as a motion, Mr. Perry? Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
Oh, second.
Okay. Johnny? Stacy? Cody? Lori? And the chair of OCR. Okay, do we have a motion and a second on approval of agenda and addendum?
I'll make a motion. We have three additions in any of the addendums.
Okay. Second to motion. Johnny?
Nay.
Stacy? Cody?
Nay.
Lori? And the chair of OCR. Communications first going to have prayer. Y'all please abide here. Father, we thank you now in the name of Jesus that during this time we celebrate the birth of your son. We thank you, O God, that during this time angels came and said, "Glory to God in the highest, peace on earth and goodwill to all men." Lord, we thank you that your son became a son of God, that the sons of men may become, sons of God, that we may be born of your Spirit. We thank you that that child that was born in the manger eventually went to a cross and died and shed his blood for our sins, was buried in a tomb and raised from the dead victorious over death coming to grave. Lord, we thank you for that. We pray tonight, Lord, that you give us wisdom and understanding in your ways, and we bless and praise you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
This time, Ms. Lillian Fee is here to lead us in the play.
I don't see Lillian with us, so I'm going to invite all of the students at McCoury Central that are here with us to lead us to the play.
Group play, all right, yes ma'am.
You all ready? Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have multiple, uh, high school recognitions tonight. Ms. Privet, are you going to, uh...
Yes.
Make that happen?
Please, ma'am.
All right.
I'd like, first of all, just to say happy holidays to everyone. I hope you've had a chance to enjoy some of our concerts. We have one actually tonight. Whitley City Elementary is hosting their concert here this evening. Last week, we hosted our high school band and hosted the choir concerts. And tonight, I just wanted to showcase some other arts opportunities we have in our school. So you see displays up from our art program. This is taught by Ms. Megan, I'm sorry, Ms. Haley McKeon, and she's been with us now for a year. So you'll see some of her artwork of her students displayed also on the back panel. But I've invited tonight some other students, first of all, students from our choir program that got to entertain earlier this evening. If you were here to hear some of their carols, I'd like to name them real quick. Hannah Baird, if you'll stand, please, if you're still here. Hannah Baird, Haley Duncan, Isabella Ball, Giovanna Neal, Chloe Flores, Emily Stevens, Lucas Strunk, Hayden Quarles, Ryan Trammell, and Kayden Ro. Thank you all very much. And recently, our Raider Theater Performing Arts Program made it to state competition. And I've invited Ms. Michelle Simpson and Ms. Emily Simpson, they're the director and assistant director of our Raider Theater, to recognize their students. So if you all come up, they have some things for them. Ms. Simpson's going to talk to you about the competition process. It's a big deal to make it out. And our students scored in the top three at the regional KTA festival. Ms. Simpson, you tell us about that, please?
Okay, um, thank you for having us. And it is, like Ms. Privet said, hard to get out of the region. Uh, we do have one of the biggest regions, the southeastern Kentucky region has eight to nine groups that we have to make it out of the region. All the other groups in the state have maybe like four. So it is tough. We made it out this year, and that was a big deal. And then, so we're the top 10 performing group in the state. So that is really big to me. We have some students here tonight to be recognized. Some could not make it, and we apologize for that. Two students have made, like, if you're used to like sports teams, when they make all district team or all regional team, it's kind of like that. So all regional team was Slade, Slaven, and then all state team was Brooklyn Berry for Drumming.
And these students have had a very busy schedule. They're also helping out with the Polar Express. So they've had, you know, and a lot of the art students are also in the other arts programs. So they may be practicing for a Christmas concert and the play and the Polar Express at the same time. So they're very busy. But, you know, the holidays, it's easy to see evidence of the arts in our schools. But I'm very proud to say McCoury Central is every day. It's part of our curriculum, and I love it. All right, y'all ready to get introduced? Come on down, everybody. Mabel Dawes, y'all can make your way down this way if you want to. Come on down. If you, if you'll just line up at the front, I'm sure that, I'm Miss Jean wants to get a picture of us. Tara Strunk? Haley Yancy? Kalen Tucker? Sam McTaggart? Shontae Pierce? Leila Narley? Brianna Gibson? Madison Erringer? Yasina Mitchell? Katie Bowden? Waylon Lons are here tonight. Well, you all competed Ekta's in the spring. That's the next round, so they're getting ready for the next competition.
Tell you what, all of you, kind of, just a little bit, maybe a little bit, okay? In fact, it'll probably work the best. All right, I'm going to take two. One, two, three, artsy, and one, two, three, cheese. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to send, uh, thanks and gratitude for you all providing financial support for their trips. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again. Next on the agenda, we have our Gifted and Talented Program Interview and Interview Overview. I do want to call everybody's attention to the mission statement that Mr. King read at the beginning. Our mission statement is to provide a safe, supportive environment to meet the individual needs of all students. And I want to underscore that individual needs of all students and then ensure they're college and career ready. This is just a portion of what we do, but an important portion of what we do. And we've got a Gifted and Talented update, just in terms of some of the program we've got planned for the rest of this academic year. Suspector?
Yes, good evening, guys. I hope you're all having a wonderful week. It's great entertainment, great food, and I'm ready for another. Yeah, so we are looking at all of our programs to see how we can improve for all of our students, not just the gifted. But tonight, we are focusing on our gifted program. Some of the things that we have planned as areas for improvement, we've developed a multi-year plan, and we, and it's, and it's up there in the, when we talk to them about that. We're doing some mental mapping, and we're going to give you guys copies to kind of show that. We're going to implement Algebra I and Advanced English at the eighth grade level because it's necessary for a lot of our students when we apply for different scholarships. They need to have three years of math. So that's something else that we're implementing. But there's several things throughout the year that we want to increase with our, with our students and with our parents. And we feel like that we probably need more input from our parents. So we're going to be meeting at least once a year with all of our gifted students. Currently, we have over 200 students identified gifted in our district, and we're going to be putting some more common effort into those students. All right, Ms. Amy Owens, if you'll come up and talk to us a little bit more. Amy's been working hard implementing the program in the schools, and she has a PowerPoint.
Hey, guys. My name is Amy Owens. For those of you that don't know me, I want to thank Dr. Van for guiding me today, just to give you all kind of an update of what we're doing with Gifted and Talented, where we're at, where we're going, and all that. This is my fourth year in this position. I started right at the beginning of COVID, so I've yet to have a full, normal year. But we're excited and hoping for a smooth transition from here on. So there are 12 areas that a student can be considered gifted and talented in. Identification begins in kindergarten through, through, through third grade through an informal process that serves as a watch list. And that's our primary talent pool. There are no specific areas in talent, primary talent pool. It's just a collection of students that we're trying to watch for when they get to fourth grade. When we get to fourth grade is when we begin our formal identification. That goes through testing. And all of the areas listed have different requirements to meet the evidence to become classified as gifted. Currently, in our, by our numbers, we have 222 students in the district identified as gifted and talented, but there are 373 separate identification areas throughout fourth through 12th grade. And then we have 54 students that are currently in the process of being identified for services. When Dr. Van and Ms. Blakely and I sat down, we started talking about first, what are we doing as a district? What are we already providing? And those services consist of different things depending what the grade level the student is. Kind of across the board, we do consultation, collaboration, differentiation within the classroom, and then I do enrichment services for the students, uh, fourth through eighth once a week, and then at the high school on club day once a month. As students progress, they are offered a lot more options, though. You have dual enrollment classes at the high school where they get college credit. Something we started this year is partnering with Sunshine Canada to do special counseling services to deal with mental health issues that gifted students really don't even know that they deal with, intent for early graduation, seminars, and then advanced classes. But our plans really started going off with what are we going to do to improve our program? What can we do to take it from the basic programs in the classroom to really broaden the kids' horizons and making sure we're getting every student the best opportunity for success, whether it's career, technical, college, whatever their options may be? And what we landed on first is a multi-year plan of success. And that's going to be regular meetings, like Ms. Blakely said, with the parents. We're going to meet at the beginning of each year when we create a gifted student service plan, which is where we start. The gifted student service plan is what we send home at the beginning of each year with our students that really lines out what, um, services we are providing for them. The plan of success is going to line out all the options for the parents on paper so that no matter what grade they're in, sixth through 12th, they can see what's available for them. So that they're aware of what options they have, and nothing gets missed somehow in communication. Maybe you were absent from school or anything like that. We're giving it upfront so you're aware of what's going on. If we sit through, there's also links in our mental mapping sheet, that's what the school's going to give you, that tells students the requirements for different things for each grade level. The mental mapping just gives us a guideline to go by, and it gives the parents and students something to look at as well. We want to make sure they're aware of their high school. When they're in eighth grade, they want to know what's coming up in high school. They're aware of their CTE options. They're aware of their dual enrollment classes. They're aware of the governor's scholar program and when these applications occur. By doing this, we're laying everything out upfront. They're aware, we're aware. But also, if we know they're interested in the program, we can make sure we're assisting them with the process. We can help them with their application. If they make it to an interview program, we can help them fill out those interviews. Help them fill out their interviews, sorry. We can help them with the interview process. So we're not leaving them hanging out to dry. We're making sure the high school, the gifted and talented program, the middle school, everybody's working together to make sure these students meet their goals. So the upcoming changes along with the parent meeting is we're going to start offering Algebra I again in eighth grade. Students will come to the high school to take that class. We're going to have an advanced English class that'll be offered in eighth grade as well. Students will come to the high school for that class as well. We're going to be offering a lot more field trip opportunities for students, and I'll touch on that in a second. Specialized programs at school, seminars, presenters, hands-on opportunities that are more than just what happens in a regular classroom. And we're also going to help set up with job shadowing, internships, or anything like that, that we can help make sure that they're getting those goals ahead of time. If they have an interest in something, okay, let's get you in that field. Let's see what you're interested in, and see if that's something you want to pursue after high school.
One of the things we want to, uh, you know...
No, no, no.
One of the things we want to stress to students, you know, just because they're gifted, that doesn't mean they're going straight to college. Because some gifted students may not go to college. Their path may be CTE or something else. And it's okay. We want them to know, though, why I was out there. And like she was talking about the mental health, I just want to clarify that because, because I was a counselor too. And a lot of my students who stress the most, they test anxiety, they put so much stress on themselves, um, you know, they, they need some coping skills to deal with that. That it's okay if you make a 99 and you don't make a 100 on test. So we want to make sure that those students get those services too, because most of the time, second class, those aren't the kids that are identified to go to cancer. But they need those services because, you know, that stress and that anxiety does exist. But one thing I failed to mention, with our gifted and talented program, J.C. Agnew donated $50,000 to our school. $50,000 to help with our gifted and talented program. As you know, it's not a program that's funded heavily by the state. We don't give money for that. And with his help, we're going to be able to offer, you know, some pretty beneficial trips and some hands-on activities that our students otherwise would not get to experience. So, you know, we're very grateful to him, and I'll let Amy finish on how we're going to kind of...
Yes, that's, okay. So because of J.C.'s donation to our program, we really had the opportunity to take a lot more field trips, have a lot more presentations and things like that come into the school for our students. These are things that a lot of the schools around us are not getting to do. I went to a cadre a couple weeks ago, and they couldn't believe the opportunity that we were going to get to provide our students. So some of the things we have coming up for the remainder of this year, our students always do a leadership project by going to Whitley City Elementary, upon elementary to reach to the undergrad student. Uh, we have two dates with the public library coming up to meet and go over how the library process works, and they're going to help with coding and robotics. We have trips to the American Museum of Science and Energy in Oak Ridge. We received free tickets to the AKD Center for the Arts for middle school students, policy, Alice of Wonderland, a musical adventure. And Somerset Community College offers a free sing day for eighth grade students. We, we get 11 students that get to go to Somerset Community for the day and do hands-on science experiments all day. We used to do that pre-COVID. It was incredible, so we're really looking forward to that. Knoxville Zoo is not going to be just a regular zoo trip. We're going to go into classroom environment, and they're going to work with the bats and our animals, actually get lessons with the zookeepers. College visits in particular, we're going to set up and go to Morehead State University. So our women's contour craft academy was a, which is a residential program for sophomores and juniors in high school. Uh, we have a Kentucky Science Dinner Day coming to the middle school for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. Sixth grade gets to work with coding and robotics. Seventh grade gets to dissect a sheep brain, and eighth grade gets to do DNA and criminal investigations. The high school gets a pulse of surgery day where they get to sit through a live heart surgery in real time and communicate with the doctor throughout the procedure. We've partnered with, um, McCoury County Extension Office to bring back youth leadership in McCoury County. Uh, we have a TEDWise Dynamic Leadership Conference for our middle school and high school leadership students. And then the IDEA Festival at Western Kentucky Center for Gifted Studies, a hands-on, full day just for gifted students, where they have presentations in the morning and hands-on activities for them to participate in in the evening. And then future events we're looking at is Ripley's Aquarium of the Smokies. Students can dissect a squid or a shark based off their grade levels. The KET Media Lab allows students to do animation and green screen editing. And there's just tons of opportunities out there that we weren't able to do. But now that we have this funding, we can pay for transportation and tickets for students to get in that we're really excited about. We're trying to make sure whether it's college, career, whatever it is that interests them, that we're providing all of those opportunities to our students. But if you all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. I thank you all for giving me the time to come talk to you all today.
We don't really, we not only want to up our game with our gifted program, we want our gifted program to be the very best gifted program in the state of Kentucky. When other districts are seeing what we're doing, we want them to call us and say, hey, tell us about your gifted program. Because when you go to these cadres, a lot of people aren't sure what to do. But we're going to try to make ours the best, the best program there is. We think that working hand-in-hand with the parents is also going to help us to be able to do this because many of our students, like me, you know, I'm a first-generation college kid. So, you know, my mom was illiterate. She couldn't read, much less fill out a college application. So when you have these parents that they don't know, they do want the best for their kids, if you sit down and explain to them the options and actually talk to them and help set this kid on a career path, you're going to get that, that parent support. And I think all of our kids are going to be in good for that. So. Do you all have any questions about anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Van, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, just want to emphasize that being yours ties very clearly into our mission statement of meeting individual needs of all of the students. And more to come on some possible CTE opportunities in the next couple of months as well for our students. Thank you all. If you want to go ahead, Ms. Blakely, can you talk, tell us, give us a quick update on the status of our gift aid? First of all, tell us what the impact aid is.
All right, so the impact aid grant, for, for those of you if you're not familiar with what it is, 81% of McCoury County is owned by federal land. It's owned by the Danaboo National Forest and Big South Forest. And back years ago, they came in and started buying up, you know, the property here, these national parks did. Well, so we do not get tax, taxes because all this land, there's no houses, there's no businesses on 81% of our property. Well, that's how, you know, schools are funded, is through this property base. Well, used to, they, the Danaboo National Forest and those folks, they would give us an amount in lieu of taxes. And that amount has dropped, I think it was like $400,000 in 2013 that they gave the district, and now it's like $14,000 that they give the district. It's dropped tremendously. So that hurts our school system. So we can apply for, for this grant, and it could be substantial amount of money. And I'm in the process of working on that. And Jason Brekmore had started working on it before me, and we just keep hitting roadblocks. But I just want to kind of tell you kind of where we're at, just so you know. But the law specifically requires the use of assessed valuation at the time the property was sold. So we have deeds from back in the 1970s, 80s, and the early 90s. We've got a stack of deeds showing where properties were sold to the Danaboo National Forest. And we have the amount that the deed was sold for, the amount the property was sold for. What we don't have, and this is what the impact aid people are telling us, they say, well, we can't take the amount it was paid. We have to know what was the assessed valuation at the time it was sold. Not what they paid for. So, it's a PBA, you know, I talked to the White Ross. He doesn't have the records. The records are out there. They transferred over to a digital file beginning in 2016. And he doesn't know what happened to the records before that. And I talked to Bruce Lomanakis before him. He didn't know what happened to the records. Nobody really knows. So I reached out to the Danaboo National Forest because they bought it. So they should have that information. Talked to those guys, and they, you know, after all these searches and talking and giving them copies of deed numbers and track the land and all that, they didn't have deed either. Probably because they probably didn't want to keep that stuff because they probably didn't give us what it was really valued, is my guess. I don't know that for sure, though. But anyway, so I've also been in contact with Rand Paul's office and Hal Rogers' office. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I'm trying to get them to allow us to use a formula to base what the assessed valuation would have been in the 70s and 80s. Because, you know, it doesn't take much. You can look at what the value would be, what it would be today, and then you can go back, you know, kind of do a reverse calculation and come up with what it would have been if they would allow us to use the formula. And so, right now, I'm waiting, this, the supervisor, um, is, she has the blue. But I'm going to keep on hounding these people. If I have to drive there, they're not going to, they're going to come and tell me by name. But I'm not going to let it go. I mean, if we, whatever we have to do, our kids deserve this money. Our district deserves this money. And it's not fair that we don't have the equitable resources like other districts when this should be, give it to us. Because, you know, we do have 81%. We're landlocked, and we can't have given this stuff here. And our kids, you know, they have as much and should have the same equitable resources. So anyway, that's where we're at with the impact aid. And as we progress, I'll keep you updated on where we're at. But it's going to be consistency. I'm going to be very persistent and consistent. So, um, don't forget about us. And whatever we have to do, if we have to get Rand Paul involved or Hal Rogers, you know, that'll be the next step. Any questions about that? Or did I leave anything out? Don't forget.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Stevens, give us an update on teacher attendance incentives, please.
Um, regards to attendance, you know, several years ago, we did do staff attendance incentives, probably six, seven, eight years ago. And so, this is really our first year that we, that we're having a normal school year since COVID hit. And just like, you know, we need to have our students in the building to learn, we need our staff in the building as well. So what we've done is we had two representatives from every school and also from every department, bus garage and, and food service, and custodians to come together to try and build a plan for staff attendance. Because we want to motivate them to be here. You know, we, we need to take everyone in the building, um, to make, you know, make the school's run. So on that first page, what we're going to do is how we wind it out, includes all certified and classified staff. And so what we're going to do is we're doing monthly $100 attendance prizes for one certified classified staff at every school. Um, the classified staff at the bus garage, simple office and maintenance are, what we do is we divide the amount in the schools to make sure that the classified were evenly distributed to make it fair. Um, to be eligible for the monthly drawing, staff will not miss more than one day within the month, and the names will be drawn at the end of the month by the principal of each school. And Director of Transportation will be responsible for sending the classified staff names for the bus garage. There'll be an annual drawing in May because we want to do a, you know, a big drawing to kind of... to do, you know, a big drawing to kind of promote and to attend. And we're working on that right now. We're going to do a trip somewhere. We've talked about the deeds. We've talked about pigeon gorge. You know, there's several things that we've got in the works. It just depends on how much money we're spending. Because we don't want to cost the district anything. And so I've been reaching out to the businesses in the community to try to get some donations from them. And at this time, OVC has given us $4,800. Lumberkin, $2,000, Artis Davis, $500, and Fiber Check has given us another $1,800. So right now, we've raised over $9100 in, you know, that's not going to cost the district anything. It's going to be a busy sentence. And I still got three more businesses that have given us commitments, but I don't have the amount confirmed yet. So, you know, we're doing quite well on that. And I think that we'll be able to do a nice little grand prize in May for them to take the trip in June. And then the second page I'm giving you, this actually comes off of what Clint submitted a few days, and you can see the student and the staff attendance percentages. I highlighted the staff at the elementary. So you can see we started with the one, and if you can look at it and see, we did have some significant stat hits, so the staff attendance did drop down. But since we started it, it looks like Woodley Elementary is leading the way right now. There's a couple of days in the area where the program was down, so Clint, we couldn't get the attendance percentage. But anyway, so you can see it's trending up, and we're hoping that this will promote our staff attendance. Anyway, we're excited about that. You know, we can hear good things from the staff across the district. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you very much. I think this will help us, help us a lot from the do. At this time, we want to recognize our outgoing board members for the service and dedication to the school business. Ms. Sherri Duncan from my district, and Ms. Lori Foster from the district.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and thank you very much for your service, okay? Thank you very much for your service, Jaci. You're very welcome. Okay, if the, if the board would take a look at the report on personal mail employment authorization, and I would recommend the board acknowledge receipt. So acknowledged. All right, Ms. Teague, share with us the highlights of our treasurer's report, please.
Okay, for November, in our general fund, we have chief revenues of $1.3 million, and we begin receiving local tax revenues for the new year in an amount of $1.241 million. Special revenue, we received our federal drawdown, which is just a re marking for our salary, and through those federal grants, in the amount of $1.438 million. Food service, we receive revenues total of $217,000. So that brings us to our fund totals. Fund one, which is general fund, we have a balance of $6.776 million. And if we total fund one through fund seven thousand, we have a total of $14.178 million.
Do you have board members have questions on the treasurer's report?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
At this mo, at this time on our agenda, we have public comments. Mrs. Paige Howard is here with us in the street. Sophia, I'm here.
Okay, so first of all, I want to tell that I am not by any means wrong in this with this. Second, when I met my issues, when I called Angela, she'd be great. She worked in other classes, shared counseling, everything was common because of that, it was very good. My issue is I had this one specific person last year, which I know that she put really in everything else that I have before. And then this year, he had to be running the classroom, which my child would do, which I understand that sometimes happens. But he is so terrified of this person, that he literally threw up. And when he came out of the bathroom after he threw up, because the bathroom is in the classroom, the teacher or the aide threw his backpack because he was aggravated and lost it. And embarrassed him in front of the class by yelling at people, and then told them that he needed to go to the nurse. But there's multiple people that have had other issues with this guy, and I just don't understand how he's still allowed to be teaching or around that. Like, he has finger issues. And I had to make my, this was on Thursday. And on Friday, when it was time to get up here to school, he said, no, no, he didn't mean to send him because he didn't know that guy was going to be in his classroom. But because I told him that I was going to talk to Angela, and he could come over there and come in, he agreed to go with me. But I just don't understand how, even why, which I know that even he wasn't there last year, I just don't understand why nothing has been done. And I feel like that's why this continues because he knows.
You want me to address something a little bit? What I will tell you, and this is just pursuant to the law, the board is not involved in hiring and firing. They legally can have no input on hiring and firing positions. If you've talked to the principal, I think that's probably the appropriate route. But don't take offense if any of these board members don't respond to what you're saying, because by law, they're not allowed to. The board, the board exists to discuss finances and contracts with school, but the hiring and firing rests solely in the hierarchy with the principal, superintendent, and your site-based decision-making council. This board itself actually is not allowed to participate in that part of the process.
And if you will give me a call or talk to me after a meeting, I can't tell you specifically what we did with anyone individual. But I think I can give you some comfort just in terms of general overall consideration, okay? Be glad to do that.
Thanks. Thank you for coming. We don't have anyone else on the list, so I don't, I guess we have anyone else here for that purpose tonight. Was anybody here just for a little? So, at this point, we're at actions by consent. I need a motion and a second for actions by consent.
I like a motion for actions by consent.
A second motion. Stacy? Cody? Lauren? Chair of all time, Johnny? Now we are item number six, actions with discussion. And we're going to hear about the McCray Middle School renovation project update from Branscombe Construction, from Mr. Smith.
Okay, I just want to give you a quick update as I have before and show you a few photos of construction of what's going on. If you've not been by the school. There has been a few more things, if you've been over there, that you can see. A lot of what we've been doing is utility work to this point. But this is the hot cold water loop that has been brought into the building. This work will be changed over the week of Christmas break. So that's on the schedule for the two weeks of the chill off for Christmas. So the hot cold water or the chill loop that runs into the middle school, the chiller building, will be changed over during that time. You can see where that goes all the way through the building to the tying point. That's all been done inside the building. We're just ready to make the town. So that will be done over that break period. Also, you see there, that's a lot of the main electrical going in. One of the other things that we're going to do over the Christmas holidays is change the electrical. That is going to be done over that Christmas break. So RECC will be here to set the main new transformer, and that work will be done while Christmas break, you all are out for Christmas break. You can see there, that's been running the hot cold water chill loop over to the chiller building, coming out of the building, getting everything under the roadway. Because once all this is done, we're going to tie it on, and we'll be able to rock that back roadway. So those are coming up along. We had pretty good weather to start with. Last few weeks, not quite going real good for the outside work, but we're still moving ahead. That's the drainage at the new entrance out by there. That was one of the items that was pretty good change over that last meeting, but that work has been completed, so it's done. You can see a lot of the demo, if you've been around behind the school, those steps are gone, the retaining wall's gone. All that demo's been done. Engineer actually left her work out. We have to use a lot of that for field, which really helped because we were running short on field material to get the roadway done. That is where the main new transformer set. They were getting it all ready. They were waiting on concrete that day, ready for it. So that's been poured and set. When they did that change over, RECC will bring that new transformer to set. You can see that's the loop where it comes all the way through the building. You can see, it was one of the days, we had a lot of rain, but they were still getting all that done. Trying to get all this ready for this work to be done over Christmas break. This is the demo at the front where the whole canopy used to be. This is where the addition's going in front of the building. As you see there in the background, you see your freezer still sitting there. The freezer is also going to be relocated during Christmas break. So we have a lot of tasks that's going to happen during Christmas break. We can be depending on all the subcontractors, and everybody's prepared, has the manpower ready, and all of that to be done over that Christmas holiday period. So that will be relocated and be up and running once you come back to school. That's just another shot of the demo of the front canopy on side of our piece of the bay. Again, that's where the, one of the additions to the school's going to be. So we're getting all that demo ready for that addition going in front of the school. This is just a shot of the overall roadway around the front of the building. You can see there, we're using a lot of that film material to get the roadway complete, so we can get that raw before it's all heated. That's just a brief overview of kind of where we're at from a construction standpoint. A lot of the work we've been doing, general hubbards not going to see because a lot of it's underground and getting covered up. It's important work to be done early on, and to get us to that point over the Christmas break where we can do the exchange overs while you're online in school. So schedules actually work really well to be able to do that while you're out for Christmas holidays. So when you come back, we'll have the interruption of heat cool, electric, the freezer will be relocated, and that work will be complete once you come back into class. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Can we talk about the next item?
Next item on the agenda is B, discuss and take action on McCray County Middle School Renovation Project Change Order Number One. Smith Interiors and Company. Smith Interiors and Company gives us an amount of $28,233. Add back to contract.
This amount is a change order, but it doesn't cost the board any money. What we're doing, one of the purchase order holders cannot fulfill their requirements for this contractor. And by KD regs, if that happens, that money goes back into the contractor's contract, the exact amount. It's just basically taking the left pocket, putting it in the right pocket. It doesn't change y'all's overall contract amount. It just puts that burden back on that contractor to get that work completed. So that's all we're doing. We're canceling the PO, and the exact amount will be put back to the contractor for them to provide that. We just have to do it. The fight for it has to be done, has to be done by the contractor. If there's still a difference, we're going to have to work this way.
So I make a motion that we take action on the McCray County Middle School Renovation Project Change Order Number One. Smith Interiors for the amount of $28,233 to add back to contract. Got a second? Okay. Cody? Lori? Chair of all time, Johnny? Stacy? Next item on agenda. I'd like to call on you a little bit here, John, to explain this to us. Discuss and take action on the land acquisition final approval from KDA. This is the 13 acres off of 27, correct?
Yes, that's it. I think Mr. Taylor has been involved in that, too. I've not seen an email today, but I've been in a hearing all day with KDA. Honestly, from my perspective, Mr. Taylor can address this, too. They seem to move the ball every time we send them what they're asking for.
Hard putting it to add, isn't it?
Yep. Right now, what we're waiting on, waiting on Mr. Reeves to send in the correct title search for the property. There were some things in there that was not where they needed to be as far as property boundaries and some descriptions, and some language about mineral rights. So it's my understanding that he's working on those and should have those orders in the next couple of days to send it back to KDA. But that's what the whole of this is.
So on this, we really wouldn't need to take any action tonight. Just simply discuss it and update on what's happening. Thank you so much, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate it. But Dr. Gunn? And the next item is for discussion, and to take action on supplements, extra service duties. And we'll turn that over now to Dr. Gunn.
Yeah, on the supplement schedule, I'd like the board to, to consider, and I would entertain any questions, create, creating either as a supplement or a position, a CTE supervisor. The purpose of this would be to manage, direct the Perkins grant that we get every year for our career technical education programs. Typically, that is a budgeted item in most school budgets. It's paid out federal programs. It doesn't come out of the general fund. And usually, that's an allocation made to someone to direct that. From my perspective, I would like to see us take a look at maybe the creation of two to maybe three more programs next year. And of course, we want to keep the other ones up and running amid all the state requirements going forward. But I just, I'd like the board to consider that, not bring it necessarily. I mean, you could take action on tonight, but I'd kind of get kind of your ideas just in terms of overall impressions of that idea.
You're talking about the Perkins grant?
A CTE director, which would be paid for through, it would be part of the grant that's allowable expenditure under that grant.
It would pay the whole thing?
It would pay the entire thing, yes.
What does CTE stand for?
Career Technical Education. Many of our students, about 80% of our students, choose to enter the world of work as opposed to, you know, the student's kind of post-secondary education. So that would benefit the vast majority of our students. And McCray's done well. You know, doing my research before I came over here, over the years, you all have done very well, career technical education. And I'd like for us not to skip a beat and continue, continue that excellence.
So really, just letting us not to discuss this program, is there anybody that would like to ask any questions concerning?
I don't have a question, but I would like to say that I think it's a good idea because we have a lot of our first kids, and I think they overdo it. We're already grown, that type of thing. It would be a good idea to have someone who's got a long role.
And once we get the Lady Ben's project completed, and I know we haven't got it started yet, but you know, it would be even more opportunity for our students to just have some great opportunities.
Should we bring anything like plumbing or HVAC or anything?
Would love to do a building trades with the plumbing and HVAC and, you know, and that sort of work, yes, sir. That would be probably my, a very compromise is what I'd like to get. Because if you talk to anybody out in those fields, they almost always tell you they need workers, good quality workers. I think it'd be a good employability of skill our students could have.
So this particular position would be paid for with grant funds, and would it cost the district anything?
Correct. Come out of the Perkins grant, yes, sir.
And they would, this individual would be helping to put all this together?
Put it together, manage the grant, making sure that, you know, the reports are filed. A lot of, you know, to get money in a grant, a lot of strings under that. Make sure all those strings are tied up so that we can continue to get the monies.
I'll make a motion that we go over to create a CTE supervisor.
Lori? Chair of all time, Johnny? Stacy? And Cody?
All right. Thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda, which I'll turn over to Dr. Gunn, is discuss and take action on percentage amounts.
Yeah, I brought this to the board, I guess, a couple, maybe three months ago, just in terms of taking action on percentage amounts. I really would like the board to consider in your packet on the, on the extra service, the administrative extra service, to consider those positions. to consider those positions to be changed to twenty percent. And I've been, I quoted myself wrong. I've been saying it would cost the general budget about seventy thousand per year. Actually, it's closer to forty-four, almost forty-five thousand dollars would be the entire cost to increase all these salaries. Reason being, it's simply a recruitment tool. We'd like for our district to be as competitive as neighboring districts. It's almost, thank God, it's always a given that as you, as you move up the ladder, so to speak, you make, you make a little bit more. And so, this would put the supervisors, directors, as we call them here, to make a tad more than, than the principals. And again, total cost, what's the exact amount, Mr. Ball?
Forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, so right, you know, midway, almost forty-five thousand per year, that would come out of general budget. So, you know, a very reasonable footprint, which would, which I think would make us competitive with those positions. Director of federal programs, Director of Finance, District Constructional Supervisor, DPP, Director of Future Personnel, Director of Special Education, Chief Information Officer, Director of Food Services.
How did the totals go from seventy-four to forty-four?
I think, I think I just got the numbers messed up in my head, sorry. I think I just pulled something wrong or something else. But I'm sure Mr. Ball told me correctly. Yes, ma'am, yes, please, sure, ma'am.
The Director of Federal Programs, sixty percent per salary is paid from federal grants. So, the general fund only supports forty percent each hour. So, that's probably the difference if you're looking at the overall total, if you take out that forty percent.
We've given a lot of raises in the last year. Just because we hired, you all hired one, that was twenty percent. But I don't think we should move that people up and give them ten more percent because of one. Why don't you take one down to ten and make everybody even?
I'd like to bring everybody up to be, to be my recommendation. Well, for that reason, so we can be competitive, sir, with, with the other. And right now, we kind of have the disincentive for principals to apply for, for a district position because they're going to, they're going to lose, they're going to lose.
Hey. We give bus drivers, we give cooks, aides, we give them all a dollar. And you're looking at eight thousand dollars per person, right? So, it's not fair at all. It's not, it's not fair to the ones that actually deal with the kids and hands on.
I just, I disrespectfully disagree, just in terms of being, we're going to be the leader of our, of our school district.
Previously, these positions were at twenty-two percent, correct?
That's correct. From, I, I, I look back to two thousand seven, eight, and from two thousand seven, eight to two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there were nine positions at the district office and they were paid twenty-two percent. But this isn't even, and for some reason, I wasn't here, but two thousand fourteen, fifteen, all those were slashed down to five and ten percent and several positions were eliminated. So, this is really just getting it back up, not even quite to what it was in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Don't know what the history was on that. I wasn't here, like I said. Some of you might be more schooled in that than me, but we'd just like to get it back to approximately, approximately what it was before.
I know over the last four years, we've given some raises, tried to bring that back up closer to what it was before, to try to kind of bring that back up.
This may.
If you want, we just come down, Stacy, if you have anything you'd like to add.
My concern would be just because we have a lot of money right now. It's Esther money. And I know that doesn't affect this, but I personally feel better looking at it later, whenever we know kind of where our, where our money is, you know, all that money is gone.
Cody, is that, oh, you wanted to say Stacy? Sorry. Cody, do you have anything?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I feel like we should look at it at a later date.
Lori, you have anything?
I think, right now in the state, we have an educator shortage. A lot of the colleges are reporting that there's less people entering the education field and less people graduating. And I think that we need to be looking at being competitive with some of these other districts to try to be able to recruit staff to fill these positions. And I think that a strong salary is, is the key to that.
I will say, I, I, I got a text from one of my friends who is at the KSPA offices, and he was saying that it's statewide, it's really a nationwide problem, just in terms of finding certified teachers, certified administrators, certified staff, period. And just to give you an idea, what ours, right now in the district, we have three emergency certifications. That means I don't have a teaching degree at all. We have four proficiency provisional, and we have twenty-one option six. So, twenty-five, we've got twenty-eight of our teachers now that are non-traditionally licensed. So, just anything we can do to, to try to, to compete with our neighbors would be helpful. And again, just, just in terms of, of building, building capacity, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenging situation going forward when multiple of our, of our administrators, principals are going to be retired because they're, they're at that age. And we're going to struggle to find administrators to take the place. It never works well for a teacher to come right to the district office unless they've been a successful principal. Principals don't handle that very well. And just thought, I've, I've been in situations where I've answered to someone who's never been a principal when I was a principal. You don't feel like to make him relate to what's going on. So, that, that would be why I would urge the board to consider this.
One of the things that I'll just, just throw out for discussion, because I know we're talking ten percent, which is forty-four added two, the ten that was already there, which is Mr. Gunn's recommendation. I just want to know, would the board consider, and again, it's the will of the board on this one, would the board consider a five percent at twenty-two, two thirteen, which would be, that would be the cost of, so I just want y'all, Johnny, I'll just go down and see what you think. Instead of, if it's taken half of the forty-four quarter to six, which would be twenty-two coming out of the general fund, that would be a five percent increase for our staff at the central office. So, I just want to know what you thought about that.
No, you're talking about shortages. We've got Esther money leaving. This year, we're going to be cut five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We're going to lose fourteen positions. Next year is eight hundred thousand dollars. You're giving money away, and the people that's going to get cut are not these people. It's teachers. It's hands-on kids, with kids. I got a message here from an individual, I'll read it to you, I presume, I'm in their district. So, they say more, instead of twenty percent, what about more paper, more supplies to be nice? Science department spent all five hundred dollars for the whole department on lab supplies and ink, but we still need more. We have six teachers and the ink is a hundred and sixty-seven dollars each. We can't be giving raises when this ink and everything that you want is for our kids. And I'll say no.
Do, do remember though, if it is, if it is a separate pot of money, that's a fund in the general fund, it's just two totally different pots of money.
It's two different pots of money, but when you have Esther teachers teaching eight kids, ten kids, and you have a classroom that's got twenty-four kids, when those teachers get cut, those eight kids are going to that classroom, you're going to be teaching, instead of twenty-four kids, you're going to have thirty-two kids in that classroom. It, it's, it's different money, but it's going to affect both sides.
Stacy, Johnny, is there anything else, Johnny? Stacy, you have any thoughts on that? Still?
I'd still rather wait and look at it later, I doubt.
Cody?
I've, I've worked through the school system, so I kind of get where Johnny's coming from on it. I've seen teachers have to teach thirty-two, thirty-three kids, whenever they don't. I mean, it's hard for them to do that, you know, so I fully, I get, I get it.
Okay, so it looks like it is more, we're tackling this particular issue and looking at it at a later date, so there'll be no action taken, no need to take any action on this discussion. All right. The next item for agenda item is F, discuss and undertake action on creating one full-time school resource officer position. Do you have any discussion on this?
Can I just ask you, what facility was full-time lead?
We need, we need, we've got a couple of employees that are, hopefully are going to go to academy soon, so they'd be a floating position where it'd be assigned at the end.
You, you told me we needed it because we needed two at the high school.
Well, we, we did. We need two, we need, we need two SROs there because of the number of cities.
So, this position will, will be at the high school, we're good?
Well, we, we, we need it, we got, we got, we got an SRO at, at Pine Light that hopefully schools academy soon. And we need to do a bit of filling on that. But yeah, I mean, the high school would be nice, okay, as well.
You told me he was going to the high school, so I just decided he was at the high school. I, I know everyone's contract say what school they're at, so they will be at that school, correct? Whatever the contract says.
Whatever the contract says, yes, sir.
Stacy, yes? Cody, do you have anything else? Lori?
I think safety is a, a top priority. And I, I personally feel like we should always have an SRO in every building in this district at all times. So, if we only have the same number of SROs as what we do, buildings, if something happens and an SRO is sick or there's an emergency or something like that, a lot of times, we're tasking one SRO to do double coverage, like cover the middle school and the high school both, recover both Pine Light schools. And I think that creates a safety hazard. So, I like the idea of having a six SRO so that in the event that an SRO was out or sick, we have, we have that body to send to that school.
And we, we started the year after, we were too short, too short to start the year. But they all require a SRO to be at each school, but if you can't find them, then you don't have them. So, I, I, I agree with you. I'd rather have, have an extra to be able to fill in the gaps of safety being atop and stuff.
And this would also allow the SRO to possibly visit with the transit situations or the drug screenings or things like that without pulling an SRO from a school building.
Correct, yes, ma'am, that's, that is.
I was at the training, the gentleman that's in charge of the program for this, was talking about the process. And I remember way back, I don't know how long ago it was, but it was a grant for champions that my wife, Martha, and Coe, and Randy wrote to, I think it was the first SRO at that time. And we had to negotiate with the sheriff's department to get them bonded. There was a lot of stuff to be done. But back then, I knew the importance of this. And they're really stressing this, not only in nationally, but in our state, what happens, what's happened in other areas. And this, all those hand-to-hand with the locked doors and all the things that have to happen in our facilities. So, I'm, I'm good, I, I do believe we need, if we can have extras, what I heard over and over again at that training was district after district after district saying they're struggling to find SROs. They're, they're short. And there's a lot of districts that did not have enough. And this would, with this, an extra one, like I was saying, if somebody was sick or if something happened and needs something extra, you would have that. So, I'm definitely for this. So, is there any more discussion?
What are these SROs, how do they get paid? And do you know what they're like now?
Amount? This is probably, you'd look better for you than.
They're paid from general fund, SROs are. And we have one that is partially paid through State Schools Grant, the grant fund that's in for the abundant one position. And then roughly forty-five thousand per physician, sorry, with all of the branches with it.
Do they have a starting salary to, I mean, what, they're based on their level or?
I'd say about thirty, yeah.
Kentucky requires a hundred and twenty hours of training, whereas some states require sixteen. So, we have the most rigorous training system in the nation. And that's, they're working now on getting that done in the summer, or breaking it out regionally and doing the training regionally. Yeah, I know. Did I, did I say something wrong there?
Those eight-day weeks are twenty weeks of training.
Okay, I'm so sorry, sir.
The hundred and twenty, if you come back in, if you've been out of the law for, for a year, you have to do a hundred and twenty hours of that.
I see. I see. Okay, sorry about that. I was at a training and that's just what I said, so I apologize.
Yeah, that's just a, like a certified officer back to certain patient.
Okay, excuse me, I'm very much. I just revealed my name, it's all my own process. I apologize. Okay, I make a motion that we create one full-time school resource officer position. Is that okay? Do you need more? Let's see where we're at here now. Chair votes are John?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Cody?
Aye.
And Lori?
Aye.
Next item on agenda is to acknowledge First Calendar Committee reading for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. We'll turn that over to Dr. Taylor. Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have a copy of this?
Yes.
Take a moment to look at this calendar. It looks very similar to the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, with the exception of the staff development date. And those have been rearranged throughout the calendar strategically to allow the principals to look at scores at the end of each nine weeks and to flex kids where they need to flex. So, call your attention to the first planning day, which would be November twentieth and twenty-first. We typically are in school on that Monday and Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving, but that's a natural break for the schools to be looking at students' scores and making some adjustments. Then December fifteenth would be another staff development day, where the staff would, would look at scores at the end of the first semester and move students around, flex them where they need to be in order to get students in class and give them time to get that scheduling done over Christmas break. And then the last one would be March the eighth, and that is about the time that our nine week ends, depending on, we have snow. Y'all don't know how that is, to make adjustments or a final push right before the end of the year, start of the season. We have our traditional fall break, October ninth through thirteenth, Christmas break, December eighteen through twenty-ninth, and spring break, April first through the fifteenth. This calendar has eight hundred and seventy-one instructional student dates. We're required by law to have a hundred and seventy. So, this one extra day will give us a cushion of some built-in time if we need early dismissals or if we have a snow day we need to take off or if we have, you know, a good week. Also, I'd like to bring your attention here, we're going to leave the starting and end time the same as it is this year. It's noted on this calendar as it hasn't been in the past on this calendar, the way we, so this, this would be the first reading, if you all approve it, and then we would bring it back for a second reading. Any, any questions?
I've always wondered this, even whenever I worked at school, spray break, we say you have a lot of people that misses here in the week, so it'll be like the fifteenth through the nineteenth. I say that there's a lot of older kids that miss that week because that's opening week of turkey season.
In April.
Yeah, in April. And I know that's kind of redneck, but you got a bunch of kids going, I did, I missed the first, that week every year, the first week of the regular season I missed. I've always wondered why can't we adjust the spray break to give those kids that first week off or that week of turkey season.
One reason we, we do it the first week in April, we want to have about five or six weeks. One reason we, we do it the first week in April, we want to have about five to six weeks of construction between spring break and testing. That way we can have that maximized push. You know, any, anytime, if you're, you know, when it's near season, then it's a downwind. If this, this is.
I've heard a bunch of good points.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Do you have anybody that would like to make a motion to second on this? Acknowledge the first calendar reading.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the first calendar reading.
John?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Cody?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
The next item we're going to turn over to Mr. John Blevins is discuss and or take action to modify settlement agreement. Call it the end of the session.
I'm going to stand up so everybody can see me because I'm kind of, this arrangement doesn't work as well as our little U we normally have. I'm staring at everybody. There were some discussions with Dr. Gunn and an employee. If the board will remember, we had some settlement negotiations that were approved by this board. I want to say sometime last spring, maybe February, March. I don't recall the exact day off the top of my head. But part of those settlement negotiations for the lawsuits called for an employee to retire at the end of the school year. It's my understanding after some conversations between Dr. Gunn and the employee, there may be a desire on his part and the employee's part for the board to rescind that part of the settlement agreement and allow the employee to stay on if they desire or allow Dr. Gunn to keep them on if he desires. And then from there, it's really the board's purview. I've put together an agreement to modify that would basically allow the employee to rescind retirement notification that was required as part of the settlement agreement. And really kind of the will of the board, what you all do with that. And if you have questions up here, we can discuss it. If you don't.
I'm a little, everything that I have of this process was actually the first year I was on the board, started meeting. And every, every meeting I was in was an executive session. So everything that I have learned about this is an executive session. So I really, I don't mean this, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable about discussing the nuts and bolts of certain things because of us. Now, I'm sure there's some things that are public knowledge, public.
Public record, yes.
Public record, so, but there's, you know, there's certain parts of it that was in situations where I'm not allowed to discuss that with other folks, which I haven't at all in this process. So I just, John, if you want, we'll just go down the line and see what everybody has on this.
So people's executive session, can we talk about this?
Well, no, we can't. The part that has to do with the employee, we can't mention employees by name. Um, and because we can't discuss personnel, but we can, we can.
It's open record, though.
Uh, open. Okay, I understand that. Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I'm not talking about the actual agreement. I'm talking about employees' names and stuff like that, so.
Well, number one, you're talking a deal that was made. It was a signed contract that got paid six digits. You, you know, to me, if you want to stay, give the money back. You're talking tax dollars to these kids again. You're talking insurance premiums because the insurance paid for it. Again, we got cuts coming up. There is a low, I mean, a deal is a deal. And if you do this for one, you do it for all. Everyone that you've ever had a contract with, you might as well kill it because it's saying that we're just changing our minds because we want to. They signed the contract, they made the deal, they got the money. Give me six digits. I won't come back. I promise you. So it's tax dollars. It's our kids' money. We paid the insurance. Insurance paid. That's tax dollars. I am saying, and it's, it's not wrapped. Absolutely not wrapped.
Stacy, do you have anything up there?
My initial thought was, you know, it was a deal. That was my initial thought. But I don't know to the extent of what happened in that situation. We did agree to share with the insurance company and these individuals, which would lead me to think that something must have happened, you know what I'm saying? There must have been some indication that these people were wrong or something, okay? I don't know. I wasn't there on my part. And I'm allowed to know, and that's okay. But after going back and forth in my mind and careful considerations, me personally, if this is a person who has qualities to offer our kids that can help bring them out of that lull after COVID and back to school and that kind of stuff. And again, I'm, I'm Dr. Gunn. I don't know. I can't put a person under them. But if Dr. Gunn feels that this person can help bring these kids forward, then I'm willing to overlook the fact that in some way I might have been a little bit obvious that it's going to be a little bit begrudging, I guess, a little bit about the fact that there was nothing given to the people. Because there again, I don't know. Maybe they were wrong. I don't know the deal. And even either way, I shouldn't, me personally, I don't think any of that sets a agreement. I'm saying me personally, I don't want to withhold talents that this person may have for these students over something that really has something to do with these kids. So for me personally, I'm okay with changing it.
I don't really have any idea about any of those. This was, uh, this was one of them I would have liked to have it all kind of dug into more.
This is, I think it happened, the original one was ten, fifteen years ago. Twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen, so it's seven years ago originally.
I know the gist of it, but I'd have liked to, got more time to actually dig into it more.
Whatever happened in the situation to begin with happened long before I was ever on the board as well. But I do know that the insurance company and the board attorney advised the board that it was in our best interest to settle this, which leads me to believe that they felt like the district had done something that it shouldn't have done and that if we had went to court, it might not have went in our favor. But the settlement that was awarded was in response to whatever it was that happened all those years ago. It wasn't in response to what could potentially happen in the future. And I feel like if the employee is doing a good job and if the employee is having satisfactory performance reviews and Dr. Gunn sees value in the employee's appointment, then I don't feel like we should use what happened years ago when none of us were even on board against that employee's future.
I agree with Stacy and Lori on this. We would need a motion to be drafted, Mr. Blevins, because I don't know what to take. Just to, hey, you modify or for the motion, just the motion?
I do have one more question. I want to help a lot of my colleagues with this, but something was said about fairness. There are more than one employee that was involved in this settlement. I would like to see, and I know I won't be here next month, but I would like to see you all revisit and make it fair across the board with, if we do from one, any employee that's still working in the district, that it be removed in fairness.
The other one did not have this. That's the only one. So if you're going to do it, you need to do it for everybody that's ever had a contract. It, it's not the person, let me get that straight. It's not the person on this paper. It's the situation. And it is a contract. When you sign one, you don't break it. So it's, that's what it is. And another thing is tax dollars. It's kids' money. And it's, it was paid, paid in full. The deal's done. And they accepted it and signed it, so.
What's the changes to contract at the end of the time? We just approved the change? Be it, or we go?
I called Alzey this week and I asked him about, for questions, I asked him about a voting question. He told me, no matter if you went to the next board meeting and you approved the meeting, when you vote, you vote. As soon as you vote, when we leave here, that vote is a vote and it's never changed. You can't get away from making a change. It's the same thing as a contract. You don't change it. It was done for a reason. It was agreed upon, and that's why we do it.
I have a question. Why is this individual's different than everyone else's?
The other three.
I don't know if that's a question I can answer.
Yeah, I think John connection.
Yeah, so there was, here's what I'll say. There were four lawsuits that were all combined. The four of them went into mediation where they set strategy for goals and things they wanted out of it. Some of those, they never disclosed to us. If you review the agreements, it never quite spells out who gets how much of what. There were other things that certain people wanted, and then there were concessions given to get some of those desires and things that were wanted by the group. It was very much four people working and rolling the boat in the same direction when we had these discussions. And they came in with things they were willing to do and things they were unwilling. And that, this is just kind of where the agreement landed after what I think Braxton agreed was there was intense negotiation for almost two full business days. And we may have even went into a third. It's kind of escaping me now. It's a little a while back. But it was, it was by far the longest mediation I've ever been a part of. And I've been a part of Texas worth millions of dollars. And this was by far the longest mediation negotiation process I've ever been a part of.
So this individual agreed to do that, agreed to whatever we're trying to overturn here to get more in return, I guess, for.
There's, there's.
I don't learn to know all of that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, there's, there's.
A G S.
There's, it's, I mean, it's calling for speculation for me to go into that, but what, I don't, and I'll be frank, I don't remember who floated this part of it first. I do know that it was part of intense, several days long negotiation. And like I said, there were certain parts of the deals that were non-negotiable and other parts that were from the perspective of what we were looking at during all this. And this was something that was on the table that was kind of put out there as a way to help get the deal done, so to speak, and.
Any more discussion?
Listen, I'm not a drapper, never a drapper, hardly ever, but I stand for what I stand for. You know, this was pushed, this was given to us last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. This was pushed through because the board members were going out. I'm going to be honest with you. It's pushed through. That's why Cody was denied on his wanting to pay them. They want it through because they don't want the new board to vote on it. And I, I'm just being honest with you. But this is your money, your kids' money. So, you know, if it goes through, then it goes through, but you need to come back and you need to tell. These are your board members. These people represent you. I represent you. But right is right and wrong is wrong.
I want to respond about it.
Go ahead.
In the four years I've been on the board, I have never made a single decision that I personally did not feel was within the best interest of these children, and tonight will be no different.
You've cited that since Thursday. And we didn't even have time to argue. And if, and if you want to get into conflict, Braxton, you're, you're really good friends. I mean, you go to the lake, you've been best friends for everyone of these people.
So it's kind of a conflict to vote on something like that.
So if a board member's a friend with anybody in the district, we can vote on it. If you know a coach, we can't vote on anything related to the coach. If you know an SRO, so we can't vote on anything related to friends.
Not, not best friends all the time, no.
Well, so the only thing I'm going to say is I have not discussed this with any personnel in the school district, period. And I don't feel that I need to accuse myself of causing it. I have not brought this before any member. I don't talk about these things with the district of police, and I have. Not for a second. So I'm not negotiating anything or talking to anything. I don't feel I would be able to say that knowing that I did not do that. I don't talk to the person in this district about this.
You didn't, you didn't call any board members in Nashville about it?
I called a board member to say if they needed explanation on anything about it. That was it. I did not tell them how to vote or not to vote, and they've not done that. I, at one time, as, as been on the board for now, long, the fifth year, and I've never asked anybody how they're going to vote, tried to influence them to vote a certain way, haven't done it. And I did witness that.
So being those friends and going to the lake and everything, you shouldn't excuse yourself.
No.
You got that work.
I'm, I'm, I'm friends with a lot of people in this district that work in the school system. So I would have to accuse myself of a ton of, of decisions that would make it that easy to face just not being friends. Now, if I thought it was important, make it toward, I was not doing something that I thought was right, then I wouldn't. But I don't feel that.
As long as you don't fail, so.
I don't, sir. I don't, sir.
You and Mr. Gunn talked about that when you all was on a couple of times the other day and riding around with your truck and you wanted to look at your land and.
Just, we just drove around. We didn't.
We didn't spend time. We got bored, I was taking care of it. We ain't got time to look at the land.
We weren't looking at land for purchasing or anything.
Not purchasing. It's your land. Houses your land, Bill.
I did. Beautiful house. Again, that's the first time.
It's column, man.
That's the first time I've ever spent much time with Dr. Gunn since I've been on, on the board. And I'm, I'm, I'm the board member I'm able to spend some time with him. That's the most I have. You can go and spend time with him. Anybody can go and spend time. That's all I do.
Thanks for doing it.
I think we hit enough topics, though.
No, we're dealing true.
Dear question. I'd like to make a motion that we take action to modify the settlement agreement in question.
I'll second the motion. Okay, Stacy?
Aye.
Cody?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Johnny? The next item on the agenda is discuss or take action on revised pay scale for bus drivers. Dr. Gunn, I'll give it to you now.
Yeah, it's still, still, uh, we just are kind of just doing a very good job of recruiting, uh, uh, bus drivers. Um, and Mr. Jennifer in Personnel is doing a good job. His, his two trainers doing a good job getting more training. We still, we'd like to be a bit more competitive. And it feel like this revision to the, to the pay scale would, would help us in that regard. Would you like to say anything about that, Mr. Ken?
Yeah.
Would you stand up?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I think, uh, recruiting and retention are two of the greatest things that you can do to find people. You have to pay people to give them here, but you also have to find a way to, to, to retain them. And I feel that by modifying the pay scale, you know, we'll be able to attract new, you know, more drivers, which we have attracted seven new drivers. But, you know, in order to retain some of the old ones, we need to encourage them to stay also. And by rearranging the pay scale from top to bottom, I believe we'll be able to, to do that. I think that will be, uh, be a great, great influence on their, on their drivers. As y'all know, we, we've been short for, for a while now. But like I said, we've recruited new drivers, a few. We're still having some, some issues, but. But if we revise the scale, I believe it'll be, we'll be able to bring in some new faces, new names. And hopefully, you know, it would give them a better rate of budget for themselves also. By not, not relying on double routes, transfer stuff like that. And that way, we'll have just one solid scale from top to bottom. To, you know, it'll help alleviate also issues in payroll. You know, for timesheet issues, miscues, stuff like that due to just fourteen different figures that's throughout to be able to cover all expenses. But I think. My. Starts out as there's a two dollar difference in start pay versus now. And then at the end, there's two dollars difference. Four total from top to bottom. But it's still enough to, to attract new drivers. And that's what we want, new drivers. There's a difference in pay, not pay, but overall cost, sixty-three thousand dollars. But, you know, we took into account the longest run, longest route, the most miles, double routes, transfer fees, and we added all that in. So it's just a real line. It's more than one year. But it gives better, gives you a better outlook to retain drivers than. Any questions?
Zip, zip, you're talking mainly this was done with years, correct?
This is done by year, yes.
So what years are we talking about?
Zero years starts out now. Pay is fifteen dollars. And zero experience now would be, or the new pay scale would be seventeen sixty, which is two dollars sixty cents difference. And at twenty-seven years, it's a jump from nineteen to twenty-one sixty-five.
How many years was that?
Back at twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven?
Yes. Twenty-seven years.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do you have like a physical copy that shows like years to?
I do. I could run you some off, if you need one. I don't have an extra on my.
And when you said sixty-three thousand, is that what you're saying it would cost extra per year or do you think?
That's over, that's if you take into account all mileage added in, all double routes, all transfer fees added in versus what we're paying.
And so as far as would just be any difference to obtain those, those four years? That, that difference as far as how to obtain them, like it's current?
It would take out double out pays, which is four dollars per hour. Double routes.
It'll take out the?
It'll take out double routes. It'll take out mileage. But it'll be added back in on the hourly pay. Which eliminates a lot of, lot of miscues in pay. So where, where they add in, double routes will add in extra cheats, extra, just. It's kinda hard to explain what I said.
It's kind of a nightmare to keep up.
It is.
So to put it lightly.
So it'll give you just one, one range of pay instead of fifteen different ranges. Is one of them.
Cody, any questions?
Come back, Mike. I'm working over.
Okay. And I was, John was understanding what you were saying was it's gonna change, just changes the system, right?
Yes.
You're doing double, now you're just gonna be by miles.
It'll, you know, it'll be just hourly pay.
Hourly pay.
Hourly pay. Yes.
Thank you.
So we're doing fifteen, seventeen. It was fifteen, seventeen, it's now.
At zero years, was fifteen dollars per hour. At zero years now, it would be seventeen sixty.
Again, we, we're giving money away quicker than we can plan. Again, these cuts are coming. I know we gotta get these gifts to schools, but these cuts are coming and we're gonna lose a lot of positions, a lot of money. There's gonna be a lot of people moving around. I, I went through this with Donnie Wright years. And I know it don't make sense to our people, but you have to plan your money three and four years ahead or you will go under. And when you give raises, you don't know if you can continue to pay that amount in three years from now. You don't know what money's coming in or what they're gonna touch you.
I just hate for the, I mean, we started off the school year, we were having students get home, you know, five thirty, five forty-five. We just wanna, we wanna keep moving the drive because we don't feel like that's fair to, to our kids to, to get them home that late.
No, and sometimes it's seven o'clock in the afternoon.
I mean, it's just, it's just a long day. Obviously, not a lot of learning can take place. But we, we're moving in the right direction, just like the, the other stuff, you're just trying to keep moving in the right direction. And again, just, I mean, what's the total cost a year?
Difference of sixty-three thousand one hundred and fifty.
Sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
But this'll cut out the double route pays.
It will cut out double routes in my. Yes, ma'am.
So that may actually make that less.
It's sort of a prepaid expense.
Do you have anything to double? I want the difference is a double route would be compared to this. About, you get what I'm saying?
This, this, you all, I'll talk to you after that.
It's what we're paying right now with having to do doubles. And nobody knows exactly what we're gonna make depending on what route they get. If they're gonna run a double or what may happen there. Currently, we are out five hundred ninety-five thousand, hundred and eighteen dollars. With this new pay scale, we would be, have a cost of six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars. So right now, basically, you have older drivers that may get paid less than newer drivers. Even though they have more experience, they may have a shorter route. So the longest route pays a dollar if they have a hundred plus mile route. So if they were a new driver and they made fifteen dollars, zero years' experience, if you add their mileage in there, they're making sixteen dollars an hour. We get into some situations where they're making more than the more experienced individuals. So if we eliminated this bottom pay scale and paid everyone with the longer route and for doubles, then everyone would have a pay scale that they can budget on. And we would know what we would be out of costs for if the district were transportation. Is kinda how the new pay scale changed a lot. That was calculated.
Did you say older, like, western?
Some, there are some situations where they may. And that would eliminate some of the docking for maybe, for the longer routes.
Not with this. Now.
I'm sorry.
You mean now?
Now, they might. With the new pay scale, everybody would make more. And each individual driver's pay was calculated to make sure that nobody would be making less. Everybody would be making more.
And from a budgetary standpoint, it would give you solid numbers to budget versus a fluctuation of not knowing from much of the name.
Stacy, gentlemen?
If I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like it's a good idea as far as, it may be a little bit more money upfront, but it's making everybody more standardized. Kinda like we did back before when we, you know, did the step raises or whatever you wanna call that for the classifieds. Now, I mean, it sounds like a good idea to me.
All boats to the drives. You have twenty-eight drivers and four monitors?
Do I have what?
How many drivers and monitors?
Right now, I have thirty-five drivers.
How many monitors?
I have twenty-four monitors.
Do they, they're, why do they quit on Fridays? No monitors on Fridays?
No preschool.
I know I've got some complaints about that. So they were, you know, you had older kids that were fighting. And I think last year, a son stood up and walked it. Is there any way of putting monitors on for Fridays or?
You could, it's gonna be extra cost.
I know they're saying kids know when there's a monitor on or not.
It's, it's extra cost on, on Fridays. And all were.
All routes don't have monitors either.
No, all routes do not have monitors. Only routes with preschool, especially.
We ran the figures at one point. Johnny asked what it would cost to put a monitor on every bus. And it was, do you remember, right offhand? It, it was significant to set a monitor five days a week on every bus. And as a bus driver, I can tell you, you want a monitor, don't you?
You want.
But it, but it just, it's just, again, it's a cost thing.
Cody, do you have it?
Correct me if I'm wrong. So right now, you have some bus drivers that's been here twenty years getting paid less than somebody that's been here more?
Yes.
This will change that overall, more experience you have and more you get paid.
It'd be a step, yes. That is correct.
When a bus driver does a double route, I know it's kinda weird with bus drivers because hours per day they get paid for. When they do a double route, if they go over forty, do they, do they get paid time and a half?
It's they get paid five hours a day. That's what their contract is for. From twenty-five to forty is straight time. And then over forty is time and a half.
So are, it's pretty rough to get forty hours a week driving a bus, anyway?
Uh, you have to do trips extra due, yes.
Looking at what's before you. Does he have a motion or a second on? I discuss and take action on revised pay scale for bus drivers.
I'll make motion. We, I actually would like to make a motion.
I'll take it.
Lori?
Aye.
Chair of the side. Johnny?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And Cody?
Aye.
Next item of, I guess, we'll be talking to you also, I believe, on this. We'll discuss and take action on bus driver incentive, incentive program. Is that you?
I.
It's you.
That's me?
Okay.
Let me make sure I'm on the right.
Here you go.
Not so.
Okay. All right, with the bus driver incentive program, we have a refer bonus. Since any active employee who recommends a new bus driver who is successfully hired will receive a one-time incentive of two hundred dollars. It's as a recruitment. The new driver must sign a contract and complete at least thirty days of reporting for the employee to be eligible for that. Once again, recruiting the tools, these are, because they are so hard. We'll also have a hire bonus. Any new, newly hired bus driver who is successfully hired will be eligible for up to a thousand dollars paid incentive when the following steps are completed. First step, possess a CDL with passenger and school bus endorsement. The driver will be paid the incentive as follows. Two hundred and fifty dollars will be paid upon completion of DOT physicals. First step. DOT drug screening, background checks, and all successful, a successful completion of all necessary resource hiring documents. The second two fifty will be paid upon completion of all necessary trainings provided by the district transportation training staff. Third two fifty will be paid after their contract is signed and thirty days of successful employment for this employee. The remaining two fifty will be paid after sixty days of successful employment for this employee. So with a thousand dollars, it's just a sound bonus. But in order to, to recruit the drivers, I feel that this would be a very great thing. It would be able to maybe reach out and attract people that doesn't owe them their. Forgive me if I'm a little tongue down here, I'm sorry. A little nervous. Do we have any questions on a thousand dollar hire bonus? Or refers?
There's no no there, council. We pay two more dollars on the hour than anybody.
Well, I hope so. I hope so. But as, you know, even with the two dollars more on the hour, you know, a thousand dollars would be, would just be an extra bonus. For, for the drivers. Because if we hired, we usually hire two or threes, but we usually lose one or two. So it's we're taking a couple of steps forward and one back. So if we're able to retain those, you know, maybe, maybe it would, some of these things would, we'd be able to, so I have to add in bonuses or extra ways to get them. Maybe if we, we raised these up, we'd be great now. Any, any questions?
So. If you got me done being a bus driver?
Yes, sir.
After every step I got done, if you would get to be?
It's two hundred and fifty dollars, up to a thousand dollars. Over six.
And currently, how many bus drivers are short still?
We are short one full-time driver and we need some sub-drivers. Because we can never have one hundred percent drivers. Yeah, they. So always short. Instead of having full drivers on one route to do double routes, and sometimes it's triple, maybe we can entice some new drivers. It eliminates some of those extra fees.
And is that what we're looking at? Each year, you know, as far as, I think we get to a point where we have a good incentive for them. We give extra people on there. But that won't be bothering them in some form, right, here too?
I wouldn't, we would have to. I mean, we can't just continue to recruit, you know, forty-five drivers every six months. Once we have a significant number of drivers and sub-drivers where we don't have the full drivers, you know, for double routes, then we wouldn't be so bad. We could cut back on some of that stuff. But we're trying to, to get them in now. Questions?
Do you have any discussion on this particular item? I'm, Jay.
I think we've given a plea for the pre-race. I think this is, if I'm correct, this is the fifth race since twenty-fourteen or twenty-sixteen. More than anyone in the school system. The li, the last one we gave, I think we, it was, we got him up to fifteen to seventeen dollars. And it, people of every county surrounding us. So this will put us way ahead.
Can you see a program waiting, they consider a race, so would it, wouldn't that just be just the new driver is a?
New driver, yes.
An incentive for the, the new hire?
New hire.
To stay on. Because, you know, do we still currently pay for their CDL drug screening and all that kind of stuff?
We pay for CDL testing. They pay for their, we pay for the DOT physicals.
We do or they do?
We do. They pay for their background checks. And that's all, that's basically what I'm checking.
The reason why I mentioned that in the past, once upon a time, people brought before us that people were coming to us to get basically free training and then leasing to go drive trucks other places. Is, is that still an issue? And if so, would this fix that issue?
As of right now, I'm not having to do that. They've all, they've all continued.
Is it something that we could possibly, you know, look at, you know, if everybody does, doing very well right now, since we're doing the revised pay scale, we just have a way to look at in a few months and say, okay, where are we and still see if we need it or is the revised pay scale more aggressive? Is that something we could do?
Sure. That's, that's, okay. That's your, Stacy, what you think?
I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking, you know, see how this new revised pay scale works out and then if it doesn't, you know, if it's short, we could bang with the chairman.
Okay. Cody, any thoughts on that? Lori? Okay. So that's it, thanks, and thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you, Ken.
Chairman. The last thing on the agenda tonight is Kay discussing or take action on director of facilities position, independent of Dr. Gunn.
Yes, I'd like the board to consider creating a director facilities position located at the district office. Basic function overseeing the maintenance and safety of all our school district buildings and grounds, making sure that we have a proper long-range plan for district construction, site acquisition, remodeling of and maintenance facilities and purchasing and-